Okay, let's all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley.
Here.
Vice President Hedlund.
Here.
Trustee Clements.
Here.
Trustee McNally.
Here.
And Trustee Parr.
Here.
Okay, thank you. I'll start by letting us know that the next meeting of the Haldane Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, November 19th at 7:00 PM in Room 211, right here in the high school. And the workshop topic will be a technology update. Today's also election day. I would be urging those of you who have not voted to go vote, but I'm assuming that you all have, if you are here. And I'll just mention that for all of us here on the board, we're elected officials. So we've gone through the election process, and so I thank everybody who's running for election and volunteering, raising your hand to be elected. It's a big responsibility, and we thank you for doing it. I will turn it over to Dr. Benante.
Thank you. President Daley, and welcome to the members of the community that are with us this evening. I have one piece of good news before we transition to our report this evening. I think it was last week, I had read an article in one of the NISBA news briefs that recognized Haldane, among other school districts in upstate New York, as one of the top 50 upstate New York districts that best prepare low-income students for college. And I think that's a pretty significant recognition that we've received. And we're a school district that receives a lot of recognition for student performance. But this is one that I don't recall us being recognized for in the past. And without getting into the methodology, the gist of it, or too deeply into the methodology, the gist is that we have a number of students who go on to college, obviously. And the Education Trust, which is a national nonprofit that examines opportunity gaps for students of color as well as low-income students, looked at data sets specific for students in New York who attend college at New York institutions. And we rose to the top for students who, one, are not only accessing college, but are completing college on time or within five years. And I'm really proud of our school district for that. I think as a school system where we will have the biggest impact, we know, and research would bear this out, on students who come from low-income families. That's where our value add is most significant. So I'm really proud of that, the efforts of our staff in preparing our students for college, not only having a great K-12 experience, but putting our students in a good position, not only to go to college, but also to do well when they're in college. So this is something we'll continue to keep our eye on over the years. And my hope is that we continue to perform very well in this area. So some really good news for our school system. Secondly, as I mentioned last month, we had a bit of a loaded agenda. So we moved the New York State Assessment Result Presentation to this evening's agenda. And at this time, I'd like Judy Barbera is going to begin the presentation. And as Judy's just getting set up here, a reminder to our community members that through the budgeting process last year, we had prioritized, including support for curriculum leadership through BOSIs. And Judy is our support in this area. She has many years of experience in the Suffolk Central School District as an Assistant Superintendent specifically for curriculum and instruction. And she's been with us now for the last two months and working very closely with our teacher leaders. I just sat in for a period of time last week on Judy's meeting with our coordinators and other department leaders in the district. She's facilitating our Curriculum Council this year. And she's been working closely with our administrators over the last couple of weeks, as well as our teacher leaders, in examining our assessment results from last school year, as well as some of our local assessment results from last school year and the beginning of this school year, and is going to provide an overview for the Board of Education. I would say, Judy, as we're going through, if the Board has questions, that would be okay to ask as we go through the presentation. And Judy may answer some of the questions, or some questions may lend themselves better for our building principals who are in attendance tonight to answer. So please, this is informational, and we'll leave it at that. So Judy, welcome, and go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Benante. And I would let you know that this presentation, and I know that Peggy had something prior to the final version, was updated at 5:12 this evening, thanks to some very thoughtful questions posed by some professional staff members, as they all had an opportunity, most of them had the opportunity to see pieces of this today during Superintendent's Conference Day. So nothing that significant, but just some nice little refining touches. So there's so much here that we could talk about. But I took my cue from Dr. Benante and the administrative team as to how much information to share tonight. The goal is to make sure that we give you things that are pertinent, meaningful, but not overwhelming. And certainly, if there are questions that require more information, always happy to come back a second time. So this is primarily around New York State Assessment results. These are the results that are from the 2019 state assessments. And though I asked if it was okay if I first just kind of said, "But that's just a piece of the puzzle." So in the beginning of the presentation, especially with staff members today, we acknowledged that assessment of learning is really hard. I think it's one of the most difficult things that we as educators do. I think it's rocket science, actually, to actually assess learning. So we never use single measures. We always want to use multiple measures. And one of the best processes or practices is really triangulation of measures so that you ensure that what you're looking at is the whole child. So the triangle that I usually use, and seemed to make sense to the team here, is the one that's on the screen. Notice that classroom assessment is on the top vertex of that triangle. That's intentional. The other two contain more standardized measures. The NWEA, or Measures of Academic Progress, which is a system used here in this district that I'm very familiar with, as well as New York State Assessment data. Okay, so once again, triangulation of measures in order to be able to evaluate, because we value it, student learning, and best inform both our pupil practices as well as our programmatic, right, our instructional program. So a real quick look before we dive into the New York State data at this idea of classroom and course assessment. So you have a Wordle there with all kinds of language that connect with the way that we assess student learning. And here in the district, as I've gotten to know it so far, it seems to me that there is a broad range, different types of assessments, looking to assess not only student content knowledge, but also academic skills, as well as other things that are important as students progress through their academic career. Lots of work on disposition, social and emotional learning, all of that really rich stuff. This is the richest source of assessment measures in any school system, and certainly it appears to me to be the same here in Haldane. The Measures of Academic Progress, again, could be an entire report in and of itself. And there was a lot of work today in the district during Superintendent's Conference Day on giving teachers the opportunity to really dive into some of the reports in this system for the purpose of refining their instruction and intervention with students. That's really where this measure can be most helpful. Again, I'm assuming you know a little bit about it. It's differentiated assessment, because it is computer-adapted. And so students start with grade-level kind of items. But then, based on their pattern of responses, those items can either accelerate, advance, upgrade levels, or put them back down into a place where they're a little bit more comfortable. This is administered here in the district three times a year. I think I have this one right now, in K-5. It is all three times. But in grades outside of grade five, it's twice for everybody, up through 11, actually. And then a third time, that mid-year administration for students that need some additional progress monitoring. Okay, so then we get to really the focus for this evening, which is New York State Assessment. And I have to tell you that I did a little history. I thought I knew most everything about this, but do you know when the New York State Assessment system was initiated? How about in 1865? And the first use, it was Regents' Exams only, and they were used for high school entrance criteria. Just about 100 years later, no kidding, like in 1966, that was the first time that New York State decided to have standardized assessment outside of just the high school level. I remember that. Those were those PEP and PET tests, a long time ago, but within my timeframe. And then, of course, things have evolved over the past few years, certainly with No Child Left Behind, and now the Every Student Succeeds Act. New York State Assessment continues to revise their practices. And at this point, we are looking at measures, starting in grade three still, and up through the high school level. Okay, so again, remember that in grades three through eight, these assessments, and I know this sometimes is hard for people to really embrace, they're not high stakes, in the sense that if a student isn't able to demonstrate proficiency yet on Math 5, that doesn't mean they stay in grade five, right? So in that sense, they're not high-stakes assessments, three through eight. They're intended really more for the system, to inform the system that for this learner, if something doesn't change, right, if they don't accelerate more than a year and a year, there's a chance that they might not be ready to demonstrate proficiency on a high-stakes assessment. What are those? Those are the Regents' Exams, because that's where credit is awarded or not awarded, and courses need to be repeated or whatever in order to graduate, or graduate with certain criteria. So that's just a reminder that that's what three through eight is really about. The ones that we're going to look at tonight are the ELA, the math, and the science. And the bullets on the bottom of the slide just are some really, some basic information. Just want to make sure that you're comfortable with that. And please, if you have a question about anything you see there. John, yes.
When you talked a bit about Regents, and you talked a bit on track. So are these specifically geared towards success on Regents? Is that the measured goal that they're intended to calibrate to?
So they are geared towards the standards at the grade level, which are intended to benchmark, yeah, absolutely, student progress up to the point where they can be successful with the standards as they will appear on that graduation exam, yeah.
And the graduation exams.
Regents' Exam, sorry. Shouldn't call it that.
No, it's fine. Okay.
Because as you, I know you know, and you'll see in a little while that it's given at all different grade levels, yeah. We do have one teacher, I think, is only on staff. He introduced himself to me today, who actually sits on one of the teams that writes state assessments. A middle school teacher, yes, David. So we talked a little bit about that. He finds it to be a very valuable experience, and said he's going to try and bring some colleagues along with him this year, so. Okay, everybody get with the bullets. All righty, so now... That's your first data slide. Let me give you a minute to just adjust to it. You notice that this first one is aggregate, right? It's great big buckets. This is ELA 3 through 8, and Math 3 through 8, all thrown into one bucket. Notice that the vertical axis is a percentage. Hmm, this is not showing up. Yeah.
It won't show up on the screen.
I need my, that old-fashioned pointer is what I need, right? But the vertical axis is always a percentage, so all of the data labels are percentages, not N's. All righty. So you also see that along the horizontal axis, we do have some basis for comparison. This kind of grew over the past couple of weeks, right, as we kept saying, "Yeah, a little bit more context, a little bit more context." So the first bar is Haldane students, and again, that's all grades 3 through 8 put together. As you can see, comparatively speaking, with similar schools, looks about right. And certainly, students perform above the average when you compare them with either county or state.
Judy, can you just talk about, so this is 2018 and 2019. So is this a combination of this year's tests and last year's tests?
No. No, this is only 2019.
Okay.
What was the year?
It is the last school year. And so it's the school year 1819. That ampersand probably should have been a dash.
Okay, thank you.
Christine, you want to change that for me? Okay, yes, thank you, thank you.
What's the set of comparable schools?
Yeah, so, again, the state used to actually give us that information, they would always say. And here are your similar schools, but they don't any longer. So team just kind of helped me to choose. I think there are three school districts. I don't know, Dr. Benante, if you want to share what they are.
For the purpose of, for tonight, we used Croton, Croton-Harmon, North Salem.
Right.
And what was our third?
Putnam Valley.
Putnam Valley.
Putnam Valley, yeah.
And we used those three schools, similar in size. Obviously, we're relatively smaller of the other two, but they're close. Similar demographic, student demographic. And we are able to calculate through other measures a relative wealth index for the communities so the relative wealth of those communities profiles similarly to ours. So, you know, so that's what we used as a basis for tonight, just for comparison purposes.
Not Garrison?
We did not use Garrison. Garrison's results can be really skewed because their cohorts are so small. So when you factor Garrison in, it's a little different. And also, the relative wealth in Garrison, I was looking at this last year, so I'm just recalling from memory, is actually much higher than ours. So they actually don't fit when we do the calculation. They actually profile as being outside of our cohort. And again, it's just for demonstration tonight. There's not really...
I'm pretty confident. I did it a number of times, but these are pretty much hand calculations, because you can go in and you can grab the raw data from the similar schools, but then you have to really, you know, do the calculation yourself to figure out what the percentage is. I will tell you that configuration of schools, you know, whether it's a K-8, a K-5, all of that used to be a factor that the state would put into their determination of who your similar schools were. Okay, so next slide now drills down just a little bit. This is now, the one before was the aggregate. That was 3 through 8 altogether. This is now by grade level, and this is only your ELA, right? 3 through 5 in last spring. And again, you see comparison here, just Haldane versus that cohort of schools, similar schools. Interesting, because when you first look at just Haldane, you go, "Oh, 67, 63, 50, hmm." And then you look at similar schools, and you go, "Huh, yeah, okay." Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't. It's, again, just gives us a good opportunity to, you know, here's what, so what? Now what? What else do we need to know? What do we think about that? Okay, so, again, in grades 6 through 8, very similar. Actually, Haldane outperforming their similar schools in all three grade levels by, I don't know if you would call that significant or not, starting to feel a little significant.
Can you go back one more?
Certainly.
Is there a fundamental difference between 5 and 6?
So this is... Could you say, ask your question again, John? What do you mean by fundamental difference between what?
In either how the content in ELA or how ELA is assessed, because you've got declining proficiency across us in similar schools, and then when you jump to 6, suddenly everybody's proficient again.
Yeah, yeah. I don't have as much opinion about that in ELA as I do in Math. I would certainly...
Sorry.
Is everything okay?
She's just telling me to speak. She's telling me to speak into the mic.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. But I can tell you that when we did the comparison, and Christine and I were looking at this, we looked not just at the similar schools, we really looked more broadly across the state and found that that was very typical performance for grade 5. Of course, you do have changes in the way actually students engage in content from grades 5 to grade 6 here in Haldane. You do more of a departmentalization once they're in grade 6. I mean, there are so many different things that you could think about. The questions really are the questions, the ones that I find most interesting are the ones that teachers ask. And they did ask some very thoughtful questions today as we shared this data with them. You're going to see a similar shift in Math as well. So let me show you that, okay?
Judy, if I could just add one thing that I think may be relevant to John's question is, as much as the state, over the years, has done a lot to really reevaluate the quality of the test questions that are included on these exams, you still will see a level of variability in student performance at specific grade levels. So grade 5 on the ELA, you'll also see it coming up on one of the Math exams in particular. And when we talk to our educators, it's not uncommon for our educator's feedback or our teacher feedback to be, you know, "That just seemed like a really hard exam compared to the one we administered last year," where perhaps the, yeah, so where perhaps the reading passages, and the State Education Department will acknowledge this, that at times, the reading passages on a 5th grade exam may be really at a 6th grade level or beginning of a 7th grade level. That's not uncommon. So sometimes the level of background knowledge that a student would be required to have to read whatever passage most readily is, can really vary year over year. So we still see these blips, if you will, on some of the student performance. And that's where we look to state results, statewide results, or county-wide results beyond just our school district or perhaps our county, to see, was this a trend across the state? And it seems to be consistent with what we hear from our educators. Sometimes it's just a more difficult exam.
Got it. So for me, my takeaway is this pattern may not be consistent year over year.
Correct.
Like 5, maybe. Okay, got it.
Correct. And I, something I don't know if Judy mentioned at the beginning, and if you did, I'm sorry, Judy, if I'm repeating this. Because of the revisions to the exam structure at the state level, the state has guided us not to compare beyond or prior to the year 2018, because of changes that were made to the exam, that it's apples to oranges. So the best we can do is look at 18 and 19, if we're taking their guidance seriously, because of the way this test is constructed and also how it's scored.
The good news is, after we get through this part of it, you'll see where we have much more opportunity to really dive into this information, to actually go back and look at a number of the released questions, and look at not only answers that our students, questions that our students performed well on, but ones they struggled with, and you can see, and what they chose as the answer for that question. So there's a lot of depth to the data. What you're seeing right now is just, you know, just that, here's, at the end, here's how it all washed out. So again, in Math, very similar, right? Haldane, similar schools. This time, similar schools in these three grades outperformed by just a little bit. Again, nothing that would cause any kind of alarm. Maybe a little bit more in 5th grade than we would have expected. And then we come here. And of course, you have a question. So, the question is, and it was my question. I went, "Whoa, what's that all about?" So you start to peel away the onion. And we found that certainly in grade 8, whoops. There are factors that absolutely contributed to that. You know that, again, a very small N, right? What was your total cohort in grade 8? Add up those numbers quick.
82 altogether.
Altogether, okay. And of them, 41 of them sat for the Regents' Exam, Algebra Regents' Exam. They did not take the Math 8 exam. And of those 24 students, of the 40 students who were eligible to sit for the Math 8 exam, only 24 of them did. 16 of them opted out, not supposed to use that terminology, 16 of them refused. That was refusal. And so it all came down to, so there were only a handful of students that demonstrated proficiency out of the 24 students who sat for the exam. 12% of them sat, demonstrated proficiency, John.
Is 8th grade the first place where, so if I look at the scores for 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, are the students in those numbers, that number's comprised of either students who sat for this exam or students who opted out?
Correct, correct.
8th grade is the first time you have the option for students to be taking a Regents' Exam?
That's correct.
Okay, got it.
That's correct, yeah. And so again, some of the other factors that are more subjective in nature are, so the 24 students that did sit for that exam, did they show their best effort? Maybe, maybe not. So we had a good conversation about this with 8th grade teachers today, and they agreed that, yeah, we think there are contributing factors there, but that doesn't mean we don't want to take a look at this.
So that's 12% of 24?
That's correct. That's correct, yeah. I will tell you that for the similar schools, all of those, those schools also do not have their 8th grade algebra students sit for Math 8. So that was comparable, but their refusal rate was closer to their average refusal rate. Here in Haldane, the average refusal rate in 3 through 8 is 10%. And this is much higher for this particular assessment.
So it sounds like there's some extenuating factors to look at, but it's still a concerning result.
It's still something that teachers want to take a deeper look at. That's absolutely correct. Absolutely correct. And remember, again, New York State Assessment, one time, on demand. Come on in, show us your best effort. Much different than classroom assessment, even different than Measures of Academic Progress, which is administered multiple times over the course of a year. Yeah, so just kind of keep it in perspective. Similar in the science, and just to remind you, science is administered only at grades 4 through 8. And in grade 4, again, high percentage of proficiency demonstrated. In grade 8, not as high, however, exactly the same. 40 kids took Living Environment, did not take Science 8. However, of the 24 students that did, a greater percentage of them demonstrated proficiency. Different type of assessment. And still 16 refusals.
I'm sorry, the same 24 students.
Same.
So the 24 students that took the Science, demonstrate 66% proficiency, but 12% now.
That's correct.
Is there Regents in the ELA at 8th grade level?
Not at 8th grade, no.
So everyone was either taking or refusing.
That's correct. That's correct, yeah. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay, so what about the kids that sat for the Regents' Exams at the middle school? There were two exams given, the Algebra and the Living Environment. This is the first time you see a stacked bar graph, and it's just showing you mastery, right? Versus passing, but not at mastery.
You're on, me or Peggy? We have a question.
Oh, sure.
So I thought that passing was 65 and mastery was 85. Is that, I must be remembering wrong?
No, Peggy, you're remembering correctly. So mastery is, so passing here, these students all passed, but they passed with less than 85.
I saw that 85, and I was reading.
Yep.
So those are students that scored above 65 but less than an 85. Okay, thank you.
Correct, yeah. Good. Okay. All righty. So this is now a little bit of a shift. I just thought it was important to also mention to you that in addition to the grade level cohort, there is also a lot of information about the performance of subgroups. And they are subgroups according to ethnicity, as well as things like students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students. and economically disadvantaged students. So this is just a little bit, again, the aggregate data on grades three through eight for those two subgroups. So Haldane, this time Tara and I looked at this together, went with Putnam County and New York State, once again, to do similar schools. Now you're talking a very, very small number of students, so this seemed like it was a little bit better comparison to make.
Judy, just to clarify, for the students with disabilities, and this would apply to the economically disadvantaged subgroups as well, for Haldane, of all of the students who, with disabilities who took the exam in grades three through eight-
Right.
-eighteen percent demonstrated proficiency, which would be scoring at a level three or four-
Three or four.
-on that, on those assessments.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct, yep.
Are these both tests?
That's only ELA.
Oh, sorry.
And there's your math.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, just one step ahead of me, John. Okay, so very, very similar comparison, and in both cases, it seems that economically disadvantaged have an easier time demonstrating proficiency than students with disabilities, and I don't think that's any surprise.
Do students with disabilities mean any child who has an IEP? So there's a spectrum of what that means-
Absolutely, yeah.
-student with disability, right? So there's a big, but it means anybody with an IEP, is that correct?
Yes, that, except students who qualify for alternate assessment. That's probably a very, very small number here, Tara, am I right? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the subgroup categories, though, have changed a little bit in that, that, I probably shouldn't get into that, Dr. Benanti, the accountability of every student succeeds act. Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Okay, very good, that's another one.
Hour presentation.
Yeah. Okay. So there's the refusal rate that I just cited a couple of minutes ago. It's very consistent between the two disciplines, and it's about ten percent. And again, that's aggregate, right? All three through eight, ELA and all three through eight math. John?
But over-indexed in eight?
Correct.
Yes.
Any particu-, sorry, who am I looking at? Any particular reason?
I think that if you look back historically, that grade was the first grade where parents were rallied to refuse exams, so.
Okay. Some of that stuck.
Yes.
Okay.
Why was the number of students not the same in math and English?
Regents.
Oh, the Regents. Got it, okay, thank you.
The forty.
Okay. So we get into our Regents exams, you know that we give many, but not all, here in Haldane. And again, what we know about this is this is really around when a student actually completes a course of study. Julie and I talked about putting some comparative context around it. It's more challenging for Regents exams because, first of all, districts don't even administer them necessarily to the cohorts at the same time. Here in Haldane, your tenth graders take their English Regents at the end of tenth grade in honors.
Haven't right?
Yep. And that's not the case in all districts. So it's just kind of like different administrations. You also have here, you have retakes. You don't have any of that in grades three through eight. And I had one other factor that's, mm, not going to be there at the moment, but a little bit different. You would have to do more data analysis to really draw some really good comparisons. And so that can be done, but it's not done for this evening. So remember that, again, this, you have two exams that are given both at the middle school and the high school. Those are the Algebra and the Living Environment. And after a good conversation at the high school today, we decided that it would be best for you to look at it this way to start with. So again, those are accelerated students in the first and the third bar. They're taking the exam as eighth graders. Algebra at the high school is all of the ninth graders who didn't take it in eighth grade. And Living Environment at the high school is all of the tenth graders who didn't take it in eighth grade. I'm getting it, okay? All righty. So again, that's both mastery and passing, and basically, it's looking really strong. Here is the English Regents, again, administered here in Haldane to large groups of students twice during the year, both January and June. Sophomores take it in June, right? If they're in an honors, in an honors track, and then the rest will take it in their junior year.
Can you scoot back up one, sorry?
Back a slide?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Um, ninety-one, ninety-two. So the-
Yes.
The numbers are, the numbers in the bars are percentages or ends?
Yeah, they are percentages, and they shouldn't be adding up to a hundred there.
Okay.
Yep.
So the ones that don't add up to a hundred were people who didn't pass?
There are students there that did not pass. That is correct.
Okay, great.
That is correct, yep.
Cool.
How many times you look at it? Yeah. Okay, so again, that was English. And again, there are a few students who are below the sixty-five, and there are even some students in the January, the cohort that takes it in January that are in that, it's, it's, because of safety net, they, market is below fifty-five, but there are some additional students that did not demonstrate proficiency, only for the juniors. Okay, this starts to look a little bit complicated, but again, as Dr. Benanti talked about, New York State assessments are ever-evolving, and so that's happening at the Regents level right now. And so we have three exams, data from three exams where the scoring has shifted from a one through four to a one through five, with five being, again, exceeding common core expectations. Four is still meeting expectations, three is only partially meeting expectations. So that's what the results look like for, and now those bars are the way that they belong, because they're not a hundred percent. For the Algebra, when middle school and high school students are put together. Which gives a more, as Julie likes to say, apples-to-apples comparison with the Global Studies and the Geometry. These are still back at levels one through four, these last four exams, and I believe that the U.S. History and Government is changing this coming year. And-
They're slowly shifting them all?
Hmm?
They're so slowly shifting them all?
They will, they'll phase them all in, yep. It's just a cycle of revision. All right. Any question on what you see? Good conversation around the Earth Science, right? Which is a little bit lower than most. Okay, so, we're back to our triangle. And now, whoops. Do you notice a difference? Because it's really not, it's an equilateral triangle, but these are not equal in terms of the way teachers really take a look at the information that they're getting about the evaluation of student learning. Classroom assessment still trumps all, and certainly, it's important to pay attention to the other measures, but also to make sure that you keep them in perspective, is the message that I think everybody heard today and everybody appreciated. So in terms of what they actually did with some of this information today, there's both the desire to, of course, always refine instruction and intervention, that's really the pupil part of it, but also to think about really our curriculum, our instructional program, and how we can continue, continuous improvement, right? How to refine it. So there are lots of reports available to district staff through the Regional Information Center, and so we went onto this site, we found some that we thought would be valuable for teachers, and I think the one that probably was most appreciated today is something called the Building Benchmark Report, and this was utilized, teachers in grades, starting at grade three and all the way up through grade eight. I think grade six was the only one that was off doing something different. Oh, and Regents, too. That's right, I forgot, Julie, thanks, yeah. But what's really interesting about reports like this is it really allows you, forget about now the end result, let's start diving down into the information to see what we can learn from it. So this is by standard, and in some cases, and in all cases, also by strand, these are the items on this assessment that were used to assess this particular skill, basically. And the question number, the ones that are in blue and underlined, are actually released questions and are hyperlinked in this report, and we were actually able to go in and print out all of those questions, as well as the report for teachers. And what they looked at is places where Haldane students outperformed the region, as well as specific items where they underperformed in the region. So I think this was some really good conversations today, and a request to actually have some more time to take a deeper look at this kind of information. Why? Because we want to use it to always refine instruction and intervention. We want to make sure that we adjust our curriculum according to what it is we see our students can or can't do, and it also gives teachers a wonderful opportunity to share their best practices in terms of instruction and assessment design. Any final questions?
Oh, yeah. On, a couple, a couple of quick questions. Certainly appreciate the final slide with the enhanced classroom assessment piece at the top, especially for individual learners. But as you think about assessing the program overall and the curriculum overall, what, at initial blush, did you see any implications for the data that you looked at for programmatic opportunities?
Yeah. Personally, or teachers? Yeah.
You're at the mic, you can go first.
I can't say that I have enough information yet, John. I'm very, very interested now, after first quarter, kind of looking at data, looking at some processes in the district, trying to figure out culture, such a beautiful place to be. I'm very interested now in second quarter in getting into classrooms and taking a look at what practice looks like. Talking, talking with teachers and the Curriculum Council is already started, doing some thinking around, so how do we really even get a good handle on what our instructional program is? You know, it's very, it's really very complex, and a lot of districts will attempt to get it documented. As soon as they're done, it needs to be revised. So I think because of the size here, it being something you really can kind of keep your arms around, we might look at a process that's not quite as rigid as that, it's a little bit more fluid. But I think that certainly, watching teachers kind of mull over this, again, share some ideas in terms of, oh, yeah, you know what that could have been? I think that they're being very thoughtful, and that's all I think you can ask for right now.
Yeah.
So I look forward to coming back and maybe giving you a much better answer to your question, but.
The other question that I had was on that last slide, which shows how, oh, yeah, that, that's one. Yeah, on individual questions gap to, or overperformance. So there are, I don't know how many questions across the entire test. If you stitch together all the ones where Haldane either overperforms or all the ones where Haldane underperforms, are there any larger themes that emerge out of that?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's what teachers will figure out for us.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. But they're clustered by standard, but it's, it's just, it's, it's not a very simple process, and they just really began today.
Yeah.
So, but that's the goal.
Would they, would they bubble up into either success or opportunities with the type of curriculum that we're using? Either success or opportunity with the students who are taking, like, what, what could be the potential driving factors behind a collection of individual? Let's go with the ones that we're, we'd do a lot better on, right?
Yeah, yeah.
There are twenty questions where we overperform, building success by twenty percent. What would be the three or four different reasons that that would be the case?
Why might that happen, yeah. Certainly, it could just be the amount of instructional time that teachers spend on that, on that kind of, yeah, on that particular standard.
Yeah.
Teachers will right away, oftentimes in the elementary, go, "Yep, informational text, we, we've just got to get a little bit better at that."
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and it can also be just the instructional resources that we're using-
Okay.
-sometimes stronger-
Yeah.
-in, in one way than another. Can certainly be just instructional practices.
Yeah.
And that's where it can be just so exciting for teachers to look at, not grade level, but at actual, their own data, and be able to say, "Oh, my God, Mary Ann, your kid's rocked at that. How'd you do that? What, what do you do? Oh, wait, did you do that project last year?" So it's, it's, there isn't, it's a great question, there certainly isn't a simple answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
John, if I could just speak to some of your questions, based on some information that I, or some things I observed today. I was sitting with a group of third-grade teachers who had just completed looking at their student performance on last year's assessment, so these results for their third graders, as well as the NWEA results from a recent administration of the NWEA. And I come in at the end of the session, said, "So what's your takeaway? You just spent an hour plus on this, what are you, what are you walking away with?" And, you know, I thought they were, they were very articulate and thoughtful about, "We thought we taught character traits really well, and we're realizing that that did not show up in our student performance, and it's really surprised us. So we're going to have to go back and evaluate that, because our student performance on items specific to character traits, which is a pretty significant part in, you know, emergent literacy, or identifying the characters of a story, and you're, you know, part of our work is identifying how characters change over time in text. So it really stood out to them." And that's exactly where we want this conversation to lay, at a classroom level or at a grade level, with, with our teachers. So our responsibility, though, is to give them the good information back in a way that they can easily digest it or access it, give them the space and the time to have a conversation around it with their building and district-level support, and, and then come back and evaluate the work that they're doing and how their instructional practices or curricular resources align in supporting that work or don't. And then potentially the need for professional development. So they had identified, we work with Teachers College, there's a unit in the Teacher College Unit of Study that we utilize on character traits, and they have professional development coming in this year, specifically from Teachers College, and they plan to engage in a discussion with their staff developer related to that. So that's all best practice right there at a classroom and a grade level. That's what we want to see. At a program level, some broad takeaways, just for me, as I look at these data, the eighth-grade math stands out, even though that was a trend in the state and in the area relative to our peers, right? Something's there that we need to sit with. Now, this is one measure, as Judy said, we had a significant opt-out rate, or refusal rate at that grade level, so all those things need to stand out. But once again, we're seeing a significant underperformance of our students with disabilities, as well as our students, our economically disadvantaged students. So we can take that away right now. That may, that may not have anything to do with curriculum. It may have to do with supports that we're putting around those students in enabling them to best access our curriculum. So those are just some broad takeaways on my level from what we saw this evening, and obviously, I've had a little more time to digest it than, than most.
I think Peggy had a question.
Not a comment, not a question, a comment.
Mm-hmm.
Is that I, actually, my comment really builds on what Phil just talking about, right? Which is the recognition coming into this year, reflected in the district school, is the differential in, for example, students with disabilities reaching grade-level standards compared to students not at grade, sorry, not with a disability and wanting to-
We lost Peggy?
The regents outcomes, and I think it's actually slide seventeen, but the Regents results of students who take Algebra in middle school versus the students that take the Regents exam in high school, the students who take the Living Environment exam in middle school compared to those who take it in high school. And there, we don't have as strong a distinction at students, whether they're without disabilities or, you know, low income or not low income, but we do have an important distinction between children who academically, I guess, achieving at a high enough level- I guess, achieving at a high enough level that they take algebra and biology in eighth grade compared to students who don't, right? And, and, and one of the things, I mean, I guess what I would notice is that in the same way that I think the district has, district has work to do to make sure that our students with disabilities are, are, are not are achieving at a level that we want them to, are students that are, are following a more traditional course trajectory, so as students who are waiting until high school to take algebra and waiting until high school to take living environment, I would assume that we would also want a higher percentage of those students achieving mastery.
Julie's nodding in the audience, you can't see her, Julie's nodding vigorously.
It's just, I mean, I think, I mean, this, of all the slides, this is the slide that struck me the most. And I think it's not, I'm saying, thinking that other people didn't recognize, but I really do think that sort of recognizing this differential between academically more, I don't even know the right word, but basically the kids who are accelerated. That's the word I want, are academically accelerated kids. We want to see, we definitely want to see our more traditional students being able to achieve a mastery. And I'm sure that's what people are working on, but I, I, I do think it's, anyway, I just wanted to point it out.
Oh, the only other subgroup not identified here was ethnicity, is that true? You said there are other subgroups.
Also, students whose first language is not English.
First language is the mic, Judy. Just because you're being recorded.
Students, students whose native language is not English is another subgroup. But again, I think that the accountability measures, it depends on the number of students that you have in those subgroups at a specific grade level.
Correct, so more often than not, we don't have enough students of that particular race or ethnicity for the state to provide us with a separate report or percentage of proficiency. So you'll notice that when you look at our school report card. It will distinguish that. So it's not to say we can't look, even though it's a small cohort or small number on our own, in a times we do. But for purposes of tonight, we did not, because we cannot easily pull that from the reports that are provided to us. Back to the board.
It'll be so great next year to be able to compare data.
Then, of course, it's a different cohort of kids.
Right, well, there's that.
Well, I think, I think the, and you mentioned it a little bit, I think you mentioned it a little bit. It's like, you put the processes in place, right? There's shared understanding of data and opportunity. There's conversation amongst the cohorts to understand, like, best practices, what do we do? What could we do, all that sort of stuff? And then there's an overarching, are there, school-wide and district-wide supports to provide training, new curricular resources, whatever? It's like, it's always going to be different every year. And everybody's going, hopefully, you're having upward trajectory for every grade. But that structure in place, I think, is really good.
Great, great, yeah. Alright, I think, I think that's good. Thanks, Judy.
You're welcome, you're welcome, it was my pleasure.
Okay, great. We're going to go into our committee minutes, the buildings and grounds minutes from October 24th. They're there for anyone to read or comment on. Communication from the public. The Haldane Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. For those who wish to address the board, please sign in and state your name for the record. Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Disparaging remarks and discussion of district personnel are prohibited. Although we not, though we do not engage in dialogue, we are listening. Please leave your contact information with our district clerk, Ms. Julia Famularo, for prompt follow-up from the board president or superintendent. Would anyone like to communicate to us? Okay. Information reports.
Can I just tell Peggy to put her? Peggy, there's a little bit of feedback on your audio, would you mind hitting mute? Thank you.
Sorry about that, it's perfectly silent here, there must be some.
I'm sure it is.
The information reports are here for the board's or public's interest. We're going into consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
These are the minutes from our October 15th meeting and our October 29th special meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, we have a few moving pieces here with our administrative office. Could you, Dr. Benante, we just want to fill everybody in?
Sure, so Mrs. Shields is coming over to my office, which you acted upon last meeting. So you'll see Megan's resignation now from her current senior office assistant position. And Ms. Janine, Janjulus will be appointed, or just was.
Not yet.
Not yet, sorry, will be appointed to backfill Megan's role at the high school, which means we will have an attendance clerk position to fill in the coming weeks. But that's, yeah, that's where we're at with the musical chairs right now at Haldane.
And we'll be keeping Linda on, Linda Dearborn on.
I'm sorry, yes. Yep, so Linda, yep, Linda will remain on board for up to 10 days for the remainder of the school year. And how we're trying to structure that, Linda, as you know, served as the confidential secretary for many years and was with the district for 43 years. So in the short time that she's had this school year, she has not been able to effectuate her transition plan to the extent that she had hoped. So we think we've worked out something here that works for Linda and also will work for me and Megan, which 10 days generally will get us a half day every other week for Linda, if needed, to come back, discuss certain office functions or the manner in which we handle certain matters at our district office level to make sure that it's consistent with what our past practice has been. So Megan's fully trained and up to date. And again, up to 10 days. We may not need to use all of that time, but I think it's a good support system to put in place to ensure Megan's success and also a relatively little disruption to the office as possible with this transition. As it stands now, there is no confidential secretary to the superintendent until next week. So even in these few weeks, obviously, we're, we're making do. But Linda's been fantastic. She's, she's been back, I say off the books, a couple of times already, to assist with things. And, but I think this is going to be a nice way to continue with her support as, as needed in a way that's, again, respectful of her retirement, but at the same time respectful of the significance of the transition.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going into the unfinished business, so we've been talking about rescinding policy 1511. That's the one that makes a policy about us, our format for our board meetings, which we've been counseled to forego and we've agreed, at least informally, to forego it so that we have some more flexibility, right? So this is the action to, to rescind that policy.
And we checked and this does not conflict anywhere else in any of the other policies.
We do not believe so, yes, after review.
You would read the resolution?
Yes, please.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education delete the following policy, 1511 Agenda Format.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One less policy in our policy.
There's still plenty. Keep us busy.
Okay, going to new business, approval of the CSE CPSE placement recommendations, Ms. Famularo?
Sure, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask one question on the one before that, though? On, we have two different policies attached, was that other a policy just for us? What are we doing with 1410?
1410 outlined the process, it was for reference. It outlined the process for adopting policy.
Got it.
And then I believe there's language related to the deletion of policy, which is not very specific. So upon discussion with our council and the examination of how other school districts handle the deletion of policy, it can be done by simple resolution.
Alright, so that was just for a reference, we're not doing anything with that one.
It's just for your reference, yeah. Because it speaks to policy creation. And a quick reference to policy deletion, which basically says the board has the authority to delete policy. So that's what we did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further communication from the public? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
She's out. Second.
Peggy made the motion.
Peggy's already like, I'm adjourning. I need a second for the adjournment, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there.
Thank you.